Okay.
Okay. All right, so that was, that was the motivation there. Again, I don't know if there, if, if anybody's come up with other concepts, other, other bylaws that folks, you know, might like to include on this list for purposes of this letter anyways?
No, not for the letter. I didn't.
No, I think I got them all. I, um, I think it makes sense. It's really just to get feedback on issues, not,
Right.
not other stuff, but, I mean, we're always willing to take feedback. Um, so I think that, it looks great.
Okay. And just so for, for folks watching at home, or for, for folks here, uh, just, just so you're clear on exactly what, what the, the proposed, um, bylaws are that we're, that we're going to take a closer look at, or at least seeking feedback regarding our, the off-street parking requirements, for example, with the, with the, for example, in the site plan review process when a new business comes into town, what's the minimum number of parking spaces that might be required? Because certainly this board in particular has, has come across some examples where the minimum, the current minimum parking requirements in the zoning, um, doesn't, doesn't seem to be enough. There, there seems to be certain sites in town where there's, you know, parking congestion there. And so it's, it's an effort to take a second look at that. What can we do to improve that, that situation moving forward? Um, something else we have on the list is, um, section four point one and four point two, the zoning bylaw which deals with special permits regarding minimum frontage and reducing lot frontage, um, in, in, in various zoning districts, and also how that, um, how that plays with, uh, the, the lot width requirements, um, that, that are in the zoning bylaws as they currently exist. Um, next on the list is the accessory apartment bylaw. Um, we've been talking about taking a second look at, seeing if we can tighten that up, if it's still consistent with the town's needs and desires moving forward, and if not, how might we i- i- improve that? Uh, something else on the list that, that had come up was considering whether it made, made sense, um, to look at and incentive zoning for, for affordable housing, or whether we're, we're comfortable with the current, um, zoning paradigm that we have for affordable housing already in place. Um, then some other topics, uh, that we currently don't have any, any bylaws for, but, but, but we're looking at, you know, possibly implementation, would be, um, um, bylaws around recreational marijuana. As, as some of you may be aware, we already have, we already have a bylaw in town that, that deals with the medicinal marijuana side of things, but more recently recreational marijuana has, uh, has, has come to the, the fore. And so, so we wanted to keep that on our list of, of things to consider as well. Also, there's a, um, the possibility of, you know, taking a, a look at, um, village zoning. Most recently, we've looked at in the, in the, the center of town area, looking at, uh, what we might do with a, a, a village zoning bylaw, or some type of a, uh, mixed use, um, that might use, uh, or, or improve, um, you know, that part of town. And then there's, there's other parts of town as well that, that we've looked at, uh, for village or mixed type of zoning, um, that we can continue to take a look at. Then there's also the possibility of maybe requi- uh, requiring, um, new businesses, uh, that come into town, uh, to install sidewalks on certain, certain streets in town, for example, Route twelve, probably being the, the big example of that, where we have sidewalks in front of some businesses, but not all. So you walk down the sidewalk and all of a sudden it, it ends. Or, um, should we be looking at, you know, amending the, the zoning bylaws, um, to try to address that issue?
Isn't, is that part of the, what Complete Streets is doing, CMPRC? Are they, are they, because, you know, last night, you know, they had the open,
Yep.
regulation, and, uh, POCs, they talked about this, and somebody, there was two gentlemen from CMPRC, and they were talking, and they would, they had walked the streets and stuff, and was checking, and they're doing, so this would fall into place for this? Or is this gonna be something totally different? Because this is gonna come from a grant. The Complete Streets is gonna come from a grant, correct?
Some of it can be from grants, some of it can just be from expansions of existing projects that the town is planning on doing anyway. So it, it comes from all do, all sorts of different locations, different sources. Um, the Complete Streets, though, if we can get some of it done before we get to that level, that's what we prefer, because we've had people coming in, some of the property owners along Route twelve coming in, and the planning board has been encouraging trying to get sidewalks. So we want to keep that going, so there are less gaps than, uh, if we do it in five years. We don't want to have to wait that long. It could be soon that someone's walking along a sidewalk, then goes out into the street, and we have a problem. So that's what we're trying to do, is nip that off as soon as we can. If they're both, they both would cooperate, and, um, new development, new proposals would have the sidewalk, and then in the future, and if we get anything through the Complete Streets program, there would be less work for the Complete Streets to be paying for.
So new business coming, so new business coming into town that is gonna be on Route twelve, when they come for a site plan review, this will be one of the suggestions, requirements that the board will be looking for them to do, is to put a sidewalk in, in their place?
I mean, I think one way we could consider doing it is, yeah, having it in the, the site plan review section, where it's something that, if there's already a sidewalk there, or there's some reason where it's not applicable, it's something that, that this board could waive, for example.
Because I know, like, Cumberland Farms, you asked them to do it, and they did it.
Yeah.
They put a sidewalk in.
Right.
You know, so now, as time goes on.
In the bank?
I'm just, I was just a little, you know, requirements for the sidewalks, and, and, you know, thinking about the Complete Streets, because I know that there's grant money for that.
I would make the point that the Complete Streets is a one-time sort of project that we're doing right now, but then in like, for future expansion of the town, if a new business comes in, you want them not to put another gap in the, the sidewalks. You want them to do their part to complete it. And the other thing is the money you were talking about. I would say the Complete Streets, you're right, it's a grant, but it's a town interest, a town project, town responsibility to get it paid for. Whereas if we put it on the, the, you know, the, the site plan review, it pushes it to the, the business that's coming in, who's, you know, I mean, it's sort of just, they're planning out their site anyhow, you know, and instead of just putting in lawn, they'll put in this, it'll be a little bit more of an expense. Some people have done it, like the bank, and like you said, Cumberland Farms, other people haven't, like, what's it, um, liquors and things like that, when you suggest it. But I would just say, put it in as a requirement. That way, in twenty years, the other people on the board, the newly elected board or whoever, won't have to do another Complete Streets sweep to go through there and put in all the sidewalks that are missing.
And currently, there's a requirement in the zoning for similar situations where if there's a property on Route twelve, and they're coming for a site plan review, it's, uh, one of the other issues with the traffic on Route twelve is, we've got so many spots where cars and vehicles are coming and entering onto Route twelve. So within the zoning bylaws, probably about five or ten years ago, we put in a regula- a requirement similar, so that if you have multiple entrances or exits onto Route twelve, we want to try to bring that all down to have just a single entrance, or a single access onto Route twelve, so that it's not as confusing as dangerous as you're driving down Route twelve, where people are popping out or stopping at any, any way along the road. It will limit the access, which also improves the safety of a roadway. This would also give a place for people to walk, so they're not walking just on the sidewalk, or on the side of the road.
Would the, is there any kind of relief, like, right, like, right now, Route twelve, that's basically DOT. They own that road, correct? Okay, is there any kind of relief, like, if all the businesses on Route twelve agreed to, like, say, you know, they want sidewalks, that they can be able to work with DOT, and get some kind of grant money to put the sidewalks in with DOT, we put up a portion of the money, and all the businesses can put up? I mean, is that something that the town could look at, or is that something even feasible?
Well, that's a possibility. What was done a longer time ago, maybe fifteen years ago, we had a Route twelve study committee, where people were trying to do just that, get sidewalks, improve the traffic patterns, um, and also, I mean, they were all, also talking about making it prettier, kind of what Holden did on their main street, to drop the power lines underground, so it looks a lot nicer on Route twelve in West Boylston. We'd like to have that as well. So we started looking at that, and there is money available through the TIP, Transportation Improvement Program. So we would have to apply, but that's probably a five-to-seven-year, uh, distant project. But the town also has to be the one to pay for the design typically. So if the town is gonna pay for the design, I'm not sure how much it would cost, but it's not gonna be ten thousand dollars. It's gonna be a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars, probably. But if the businesses, like you say, are in the, I, in the interest of doing this, then that's short money compared to doing the actual construction, which would be millions of dollars. So it's kind of building and trying to pull everything all together, so that it can work. That's planning, I guess.
I'm not sure TIPS will cover sidewalks, because.
It would be the whole, it would be a streetscape project. It wouldn't just be the sidewalk.
Sidewalks, it won't cover a sidewalk.
Right.
The tip, the requirement is, you know, it will relieve the congestion.
Yes.
Safety, so that times they can put the sidewalks. But Route twelve, what is the congestion? What is the safety?
The weekends.
I don't know, I don't know.
Drive, drive there at noon time on Saturdays.
The weekends.
Yeah, that's, what, you know.
But yes, you know, that's, we have to, we have to justify.
If you ask for one forty, yes. That's a good place for the congested area, you know.
Especially from my street into town.
No, that's not going to, nope.
The backup at the town center, here, where it backs up, up the street right here.
Yeah, your street is the borderline, so we don't.
Well, that's good, so I can get into my driveway.
Yeah, so, we are thinking of.
Oh, yeah, so that's, so the tip, we are thinking, and actually Raj is, you're on the board over there now, so that's, it's a good foothold for us to get more information. So I think we can.
It's, uh, CM, MPO.
MPO, yeah.
Yeah, different name, but it's, it's one of the players now, so we should be paying attention.
But it takes, yeah, it does takes a, like, long, long, long time. And I don't think so.
Two weeks?
No. Yes. And we need to spend money, upfront money.
Right.
For the study and the engineering studies, all those things.
All right.
Okay.
Interesting.
I think, you know, if you remember, one, one of the site plan review, one of the businesses came in, they adamantly refused, we are not going to put the sidewalks.
What'd you say?
No, very recently. So, but some, some of the businesses, they will say, yes, we will put the sidewalks. But some will say, no. It's not on the, it's not on the zoning bylaw, we are not going to put any sidewalks. You're asking too much.
So that's something that you have to include in the zoning bylaw, to make, so that when somebody does come in for a site plan review on a main road, like Route twelve, that it's in there, so that there would be a requirement, they would have to do it?
Yeah, a lot of the times the town, the developers look at it, and they look at our zoning bylaws before they even come to us, and they say, okay, this is what, I've got a piece of property, it's gonna cost me this much to develop. They look at the bylaws and say, what do I have to do? So they have established some cost to do the work, and then some return on what they're gonna get for it. Sidewalks are not cheap, so it could put the project in a position of being less feasible, less profit. So that's why, if we have it in the bylaws right up front, they know that they can plan on it, then it's built into their design. It's not a surprise when it comes to the planning board, and hear, oh yeah, we'd like to have a sidewalk in here. So that's why I'd like to get it in there. So they know upfront in doing it, and it's something that can be waived, like most of the other site plan stuff.
Strict compliance, not required?
Right, right. I mean, if it's gonna be a dangerous situation, we wouldn't want to do it, so.
Right. All right. Um, these are, these are the letter. Again, I apologize, I cut this out so late, but any comments?
The only comment I have is, something, well, to, to request a, not just, I don't know, you have to ask them for their opinion in such a way that it's not just like, sure, go ahead, you know, very casual. You have to make them, I don't know, have some skin in the game, not skin in the game.
Is there a carrot that we can?
Right, I don't know what it is. But please, please tell us which ones, I don't know, we should concentrate on first, like, rate them, or I don't know. Something just so that, like, that's what happened with the village zoning. I went to the board selectmen, and they, and they said, sure, bring us, send us something, and we'll do it. And I'm like, well, it's not, I'd rather, you know, where it's sort of, are you interested or not? Not to send us something, because it's a lot of work to send you something, and then you decide that you're not gonna do it.
Like change importance to priority?
Yeah, yeah, maybe have it, set it up, set it up so they can just take it, make a Xerox copy and have it prioritize one through, whatever the number is, one through six. Give us your listing and submit it to us by a certain time.
Put a block next to each one, where they can write in the number or something?
A blank line, a block, yep, something like that.
All right.
And then just, and then if they submit, they submit, if they don't.
And one through five over here.
Okay.
Like, important to me, not important.
I like that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
How about over here, we do order, first, second, third, fourth, and over here, we do, um, importance to me. Non-important, very important. And then we'll have it scanned into the scanometer, and we'll have a.
Scanometer?
Scan, what do they do with standardized tests?
We want to keep it simple.
I don't know.
What's the standardized test reader?
Is it called a scanometer?
Scan, the, the terrorizer? The debilitating? I'm sorry, there's a negative connotation of that.
I will tell you, the majority, majority of these are world concerns of the ZBA, because these are the things that, you know, we, we're gonna see. And there's, there are specific points that, you know, I personally would like to see either completely changed, eliminated, or.
I don't think we can eliminate, because I think this is a problem.
Well, we can eliminate. We had that discussion before.
But I think, don't, don't you run into a problem where if there's, if it's, if it, if the bylaws are silent on issue, then really the town has no control?
Right, but you can, if we wanted to access, not allow accessory apartments, we can delete that whole thing.
Oh, right, okay. But you have to say not allowed, or something. You don't just delete the whole thing.
Well, we just, yeah, you would.
Update the schedule.
We would change it, yeah, right, right.
But you can't be silent, then.
You can't just, yeah, well, you have, we have to do something. It, it's gonna be an active town meeting, so it's not just us making the decision either way.
Right.
So we're gonna do, we want to try to figure out where we start, and then get feedback, and try to present it to town meetings, see what they decide, and then it's real or not. But it's not real until they decide.
Right, vote it in or not, yeah.
So I do, I do want to add one more thing, you know.
Sure.
So the signs and billboard technical corrections.
Yes.
With that signs, someone, you know, did go to all the electronic signs, sit there and take the time, all the size and everything.
Yeah.
But one of the ZBA thing came in, and they had the confusion of whether we can have the sign like, uh, black and white or color signs. It's not, the language is not clear.
So yes, that may be one aspect.
Maybe we could dust the.
So did you want to add that to this list?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. And also, and also, they were taught, if, if it is zero, zero seconds, no time limit, changing one to another, then how this is, uh, how we can say blinking?
We've got language in it that says it can't be.
No, it's blinking. No blinking.
But they're not, right, and they're not allowed to have blinking.
But zero to one second, zero seconds means, I put my first sign, the second sign comes in, no delay.
Instantly.
Instantly, so that's.
Nobody can read it.
That's blinking.
Well, and we don't want that, but the board is working it out.
I'm, I'm just saying, well, that's, that's why we made the change at the last town meeting.
We, we do need some, some clarity on those area, those lines, whether they can have the black and white or the color. So it clearly says color. We have, we have, we have.
I think it's a solid background or something like that. Like, you can have color, but you can't have a color image.
So you want to add that to this letter for people to prioritize?
Yeah.
So we can, so we can look at the sign bylaw as well, relative to the electronics.
Yeah, you should have a sign bylaw.
Yeah. Definitely, you know, we do need to make some changes.
Do we want to add the entire sign bylaw, or, or really focus it on the electronic sign part?
Well, because if we're gonna send this out for comments, people don't really know what we're thinking about, so I would say, keep it, if we're talking about electronic sign size and colors and timing, and put that in there. But, because it could be that people don't like the billboards in town, and that's in the sign bylaws, but we're not gonna change it, because that's the state law, even though nobody in town really likes them, I think.
And also, there is, there is one other thing also.
What's that?
So is there any, the size wise, three, twelve, twelve feet, right?
Twelve square feet.
Yeah, twelve square feet. But there are signs bigger than that. How they can have that sign?
It's a more compliance.
One rule for one person, the other one on, on the other.
Well, that's because we have favorite people and unfavorable people, and that's, the good people get the good things, and the bad people don't.
So, you know, that also has to be some language.
Well, I don't know, I don't, I think the only electron- electronic sign it's gotten.
Central of the town.
Well, that doesn't.
It's a bigger sign.
Doesn't mean it's bigger than the law. It's bigger than the zoning bylaw.
It's bigger than twelve square feet, or thirty-three percent of the permitted sign area?
Yes.
And also, you know, there is one exception, was the school. The school can have all of them.
The school didn't even get a permit, did they?
No.
No.
Well, it's bylaws.
Like, the school, didn't the school have that sign before we did the bylaw?
The sign bylaw?
It was before we did the amendment.
No, the, the, the change in that bylaw, I think, was to let the school do it, because we say that it has to be a business, but then we say, all right, it doesn't have to be a business. The school can do it, have a sign also. I think that's what it is.
No, the school can, the school can do the.
It says, residence.
It may just.
It says, digital display signs are not permitted within any residential district, except at the West Boylston High School.
Okay, with some caveat, just so that they could do.
Right.
But the idea that they were in before the regulation doesn't, because electronic signs were not allowed in town legally, until the regulation was put into place.
Right.
So just because they predate the regulation, doesn't give them any grandfathering.
Right.
But it's our building inspector that needs to look and see what has to be done. I mean, that's what, we need a background before we start discussing it even further.
Yep, yeah.
Right.
Actually, can I?
So we'll put it on the letter.
Yeah.
Yep, put that on there.
I did have a question. It's a little bit tangential about the sign bylaw question that came to the ZBA, or permit, whatever.
There was a variance.
Which way did you go on that?
We, we voted again. He would.
We can. I'm just wondering what the outcome was.
And the reason, the reason that he withdrew was because.
Oh, he withdrew, okay.
Well, the thing is, and it's a little confusing, because he has an eighteen-square-foot sign already.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was gonna.
He's trying to keep it eighteen square feet, but the bylaw, because of the, the.
Electronic sign.
Electronic sign says that you can only have twelve square. So it was kind of like, mm, but then, but then Chris made a good point. He asked him specifically, you know, is the size of the sign your big, biggest concern, or is it the color? Because he started talking about color, and we're looking, and I think that's the point that Raj was trying to make about the color, and about, you know, how, how often it would go off. And Chris asked him point-blank about it, and he kind of like, well, I want to make sure that I can have color, and it seemed like it was, the color was more important than the size of the sign, and that's when he decided to withdraw.
Okay.
His petition. So I mean, I think it was a good point, you know, it was a valid point that Chris asked him point-blank, you know, and then.
Well, I'm not so much talking about the decision there. Uh, when I saw that, and I went and measured, it, he has a good point, which is that a legal changeable copy sign is bigger than a digital changeable copy sign.
Right.
And, I mean, it, it would kind of make sense for all these people with the changeable co- manually changeable copy. You, you, it makes sense that they don't want to redesign their sign to, to do something. They want to take that out and put a changeable, you know, an automatic one in. I think maybe you can.
Yeah, but he's going to redesign the entire, the, their frame.
It was, because it looked like it was pretty similar to his, his frame, or his sign.
I'd rather not relitigate.
No, I'm not really talking about the decision. I just think there's some logic to, if people have signs in town.
Well.
Well, that's something we, we're gonna talk about that, because that's what the point of the, is.
Yeah, we're gonna have to go through it.
I think we should relate the changeable copy manual signs to the digital copy signs.
We can do that, yeah, in the context of electronic sign changes. Um, one thing.
You want to be looking at?
Yes.
I just want to make a suggestion on the, um, special permits regarding minimal lot frontage with requirements. What, personally, what I would like to see is, is that you, that the board considered dividing it, having a, uh, the minimum lot frontage for residential, commercial, and then a separate one for the aquifer protective layover overlay, you know, because, only because of the simple fact, and this was something that was brought up by Chris, and I had to think about it, and it made sense to me, is that, and I had to call town council to, to get verification, because it is a separate line item. You know, the aquifer, a hundred and fifty feet of frontage, with fifty thousand square feet of property. So it kind of separates. I mean, even though they're trying to put residential units in there, it's still a separate, so I would think, I would hope, or suggest that the board, when they look at this, is that they make two bylaws, that they make one for the residential, commercial aspect of it, and then one strictly for the aquifer, and that they would leave it at the hundred and fifty, that that can't be changed. If it's in the overlay, the aquifer overlay protection, it stays a hundred and fifty feet of frontage, and it stays fifty thousand square feet. Because I think that's the problem that was going on with that, and that was the confusion.
And I think that's one of several things that, that our further discussion will, will cover.
That will, right, will be discussed.
That will definitely be discussed. One other thing that I just wanted to mention, uh, before we, uh, bring up Dr. Taschen to, to talk about some more zoning issues was, so, um, the, first of all, the, the, the open space meeting with the open space plan last, uh, last night, introduction of that with questions. Thought it was a great meeting. I thought it was, I, I certainly, uh, learned a lot about the plan, and, and what, uh, that committee, and other committees in town transportation and others are looking for. So, but as to sort of this letter and zoning, are there things in the realm of open space and transportation that we also might want to consider as part of this process to help facilitate some of what those other boards are trying to accomplish with their, with their, with their plans? I don't know if there's anything that comes to mind, or if it's just something that we can noodle on between now and, and the next meeting or two?
A noodle.
Yeah, so, just, just a thought.
The, um, the only thing, I'll bring it up again, is parking lots with islands I don't like. I want them all cleared out, so that in the winter, my kids can practice their skid driving without tearing the wheels off the car.
I think that makes sense.
Go down one forty.
In the middle of that, you don't want that?
Rain garden?
In the middle of it?
Well, the rain gardens, because they're like, just bumps, it's okay.
All right.
No curbing?
Right, that's all they are, just a pile of dirt in the middle of the parking lot.
That's a bad, but I think that's a good idea. Well, Chris's idea is a good idea. The, uh, I will go through the open space and rec plan and see if there are recommendations for the planning board to consider zoning changes. I can't think of any off the top of my head.
Yeah, something's immediately coming up, but I'm just trying to think, since we're doing some of this together, to the extent we can cooperate, collaborate.
I think it's a great idea. I, I should have thought of it myself, so that's good.
So, we'll do that. So I'll tell you what I'll do then. Between now and the next meeting, I will make the changes that we talked about in this letter. Other folks can, again, continue to noodle. I'll bring it back to our next meeting, we'll finalize the letter, and then we can send it out to the, you know, town boards departments.
Where?
And go from there.
Where are they, I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to think of where they're related. The, the open space, the only thing I can think of is the trees in parking lots, like, the number of trees per space or something.
Yeah, no, that wasn't, that has nothing to do with, that, that issue came up when we got Salter School, the, when they first moved in. It was just this massive pavement, and it was just a heat-radiating monster. No one, no one liked it. There was driving by, so the planning board at the time put in this.
Okay.
Add some trees, so there's shade. And that's, that's why it's there. So you don't have that massive expanse. So when you're learning to drive, you actually have to learn to drive around things.
Yeah, but when you're sliding, I don't want them to crash into things. When they make mistakes, I want it to, they drive over a painted white line, instead of a curb and blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, that, that was the reason behind that, but it's something to consider.
So it wasn't the parks request, or something?
No, no, but I can check to see if there are other things. It's been, should be more in my head, but I've been looking at other things.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I'm just wondering if there's certain sections in town, certain areas in town, where we can improve screening requirements, or setbacks, or, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just sort of spitballing here, but.
Or this chain link fence requirement for, or not chain link fence.
There's a great one, there's a great one right there. All right, so with that, let's, 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 we move on from this. Let's move on. Come on up. Um, so I know, um, one of the, um, I, so, Dr. Taschen, thank you, you provided here, um, some documents, which, which I know you, you prepared for this meeting. I think one of the things that, that was on your minds, that you wanted to talk about, which I think does have some relationship to our ongoing discussions on zoning changes, um, it might be, you know, future protection of, of, of the drinking water in town, aquifer, uh, protection, and, and the like. Um, so with that, are there specific things you have in mind, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, and I very much appreciate it. And I know this is the planning board, and I know your focus is different on the planning board than other boards. And many problems came out of the discussion. And many problems came out of the discussions in the recent ZBA meetings because there wasn't information and data of the past history. No records, no data, and it made it very difficult at the ZBA meetings. And for me, it's important that the history is understood and we learn. And I just briefly prepared this document for the planning board meeting, and I titled it, "A Review of Drinking Water and Water Quality During and After World War II As the Torch is Passed to a New Generation of West Boylston Town Government." In all fairness, how are you to know and understand the history? And how can you gain information to make decisions without understanding the history? As a result of those meetings in ZBA, and this isn't critical of the ZBA, I understand why they did not know what was going on, but the big problem was no records. I then went and tried to determine where are the records? Of course, a lot of my records were, uh, still in those containers on Prospect Street. And the first stop was I went up and spoke to the, uh, town administrator in Nancy Lucia, who's an excellent administrative assistant for years. And I've known Nancy through the years, and I said, Nancy, we got a problem, there are no records. And I said, I'm looking especially for this booklet, uh, which is a plan I prepared. And I said, it was down in the mid-two thousands, but it's buried in the containers. So she said, I'll go look at you and see what I can in the archives of this building. So Nancy went, and it wasn't too long, she came up with a bushel box with two handles. She says, I think I got you right, your booklet, this is it, a hundred and fifty pages. She says, is this what you're looking for? I said, that's what I'm looking for, so I then took and made a copy and put it in Staples. This has the whole basis of what was going on in the town, and the basis of what I'm planning for the future. So from this book, I have fortunately that information. Nancy said, I got everything. She said, I got it back, wherever your name is on anything, it goes back to when we were meeting in the mistus school. She said, I've got it all, wherever your name is, it's in the bushel, and so those records are there. I then went to, uh, the water department, which was another question, how come the water department doesn't have the records? And I spoke to the water superintendent, again, very cooperative. He said, I don't have those records, they go back before your time, have nothing on the botulism and the issues that have come up. But he said, I'll be very cooperative. And we got very cooperative, and I, I will mention, uh, some of the key points that came up in the meeting, meetings with him. I then went to the Board of Health, and I said, we have a problem here, we don't have records. And I asked certain questions as to what was done and zoning and so forth, and I'll go into that too. They didn't have the records. So the basic historical background of what occurred, as Nancy says, it's in this book. Plus, as she said, I got a bushel of material with your name and so forth, I can pass it around if you wanna see it. So I, I wasn't quite certain what was gonna come up in this meeting, and it's here in this document. And the first key thing I wanted to know is the wells. The, uh, the wells in West Boylston, how deep? And the well on Lee Street is fifty-six feet deep, only fifty-six feet. That brings up what supplies the well, the recharge. So recharge is vital, absolutely vital. And then we went into other wells, and if you can see, it's the, uh, the well on Pleasant Valley, wait, I'm gonna get my glasses. Pleasant Valley will, and the, one Lee Street well produces forty percent of the town water. The Pleasant Valley well produces fifty percent of the town water. And the, uh, Pleasant Valley well is a hundred and ten feet deep. It apparently depends upon recharge. The Oakdale well produces ten percent of, of the, uh, town water at a depth of fifty-six feet. And recharge seems to be the, a factor. But the other serious factor, concern I have, that seems to be taking water from the watches at reservoir. And I think that open water is of consideration. And as a result of this all, uh, I've been in touch with the DCR. Now, I'm not employed by the DCR, but I have worked closely for decades with the DCR. And I understand what DCR does, and I, I think you all know, the DCR was formerly, when it was established through the system of reservoirs from Western Massachusetts, Metropolitan District Commission. That was when the town of West Boylston was situated where the watches at reservoir now is. It was moved up into this location. It became later the DCR, Department of Conservation and Recreation. But there's one other set of letters that goes on to that, DCR CR. When it's a DCR CR, it's Department of Conservation and Recreation, Conservation Restrictions. Now, when the DCR purchases land, like they did the sixty acres that was discussed at the, uh, ZBA meeting, they will purchase it as DCR land. So that becomes strictly DCR. When they make the agreements to purchase it as DCR CR, they then make a agreement with the landowner. And that is a very detailed, uh, type of agreement on preserving the land. And that has on it certain stipulations such as you can't turn the soil, et cetera, et cetera. Now, in those years that I worked with DCR, much of Malden Brook Farm went into DCR CR. In addition, over a hundred acres of Malden Brook Farm was in Holden. And this is where I, one ninety enters in, and I can spend time on that if you want, or I got a big, uh, chart out there. So, DCR and I worked closely together, and the agreements took time. And to get this funding, the funding that DCR gives under a DCR CR is fair market value, which means that the land cannot be sold, and if you violate DCR regulations, you'll have the state police against you. And that's happened, where people have gotten land, uh, and they've had water from cow barns and so forth flow into, uh, water, it's a problem. So there's two factors to consider, above ground and underground. And how deep are the wells? Now, when I discuss this more with the water superintendent, he said, we're operating at a fifty-six feet. He said, we talked about the three sixty-three Prospect Street well, that, in which I mentioned in a interview, that at about less than a hundred feet, we struck water, and then we went down through solid rock at about two hundred feet, and got water. And, as the water superintendent points out, if we start pumping water from depths of two hundred feet, then he says the cost of bringing up that water is going to add to the cost of water. So then, I talked to the, uh, to the Board of Health. And I said, here we've got this water problem in these Artesian wells. Now, in addition, and I'll get back to the Artesian wells, and I mentioned this in this, we have the recharge and the overflow, the, the flow for the recharge. And the land should not be disturbed by housing or anything. Now, I mentioned three types of overflow of, uh, local water. Now, at the three seventy-eight house, which came from my ancestors, there's another well about fifty-six feet into the fifth. That well, same thing like the wells on Lee Street, you can't kill them. So, those wells can pump tremendously, providing the recharge is not disturbed. Now, right, right next to the well at three seventy-eight Prospect Street is another hand dug well. That hand dug well is probably ten, twelve feet. Now that had a hand pump. So it's possible with that hand pump at that level to get enough water, we were washing vegetables, watering, uh, the horses before they went to, took the wagons to market and so forth, had a lot of water. Now you take, going back into the history, why did they put the town wells on Prospect Street? They put the wells on Prospect Street because they, it was a great source of water. They had everything, Route twelve, everything, the, uh, that was in nineteen thirty-nine. Route twelve, uh, was no problem, Prospect Street was no problem. They chose, and my uncle was a big factor in that as an attorney for the water district. They put it on, on, uh, the location at Lee Street. Now, from Lee Street, with the WPA, Works Project Administration, they, they, uh, planned the water to be, take it to the highest point in West Boylston, which is on the top of the hill at Lawrence Street where the tanks are. And from there, of course, it comes down and goes by gravity flow into, uh, the town of West Boylston. Now, on the top of that hill, next to the tanks, I worked with the DCR as far as DCR CR. And in some of the DCR CRs, we left some of the land open for very specific purposes. On that land near the tanks, there was a twenty, less than twenty feet hand dug well. That well had a lead pipe by the farmer all the way down to the four oh five horse Prospect Street, next to the, uh, Prospect Street, uh, street. And that by gravity flow with that hand dug well up there provided enough water for his cows, his animals, and its own drinking water. So there's an example, I had hand, hand pumped to get it, gravity flow. Then the next one is overflow. Now, you look in those whole areas up there on Prospect Street and Malden Brook Farm, and I can assure you, DCR understands that with the ones I worked with, DCR is a big organization, and, and, uh, so it's, it's, it took study by the people that we worked together with. Along Prospect, on all our farm and so forth, and on Malden Brook Farm, we could just dig a well, dig a little well, it'll overflow. That overflow was part of the recharge, now it's called stormwater drainage. But that was overflow from the water, from the, uh, fields.
So let me ask you a question, so what are, just in the, in the interest of time here, so what are your sort of, your current and future concerns?
Then, I'll quickly, I'll, I'll bring it to the concern. I'll just say this, and it's hard to read this, but it's a map that shows, uh, if you look at it carefully, it'll show DCR land, uh, Prospect Street, Lawrence Street, and, uh, the locations is where DCR is. Now, if you look, I'll just give an example on zoning. Now you take, which came up with this housing development on two sixty-four Prospect Street. If, and I bring up this serious problem, now, if you have zoning on this aquifer, in which there's, uh, there's, uh, that problem, it's more than the length of the house lot, it's what that can do. And the one good example of this is Carol's Pond. DCR has on the, DCR CR, Carol's Pond and the land above it. And then going up Prospect Street, there's an area, the barn, which got in a very confused state, land, and that barn that's, that's, uh, under the DCR CR plan, but isn't under direct DCR. Now, let's assume someone comes in for zoning and say, it doesn't matter how wide that lot is, they say, I, I got enough there for a lot. Now, they build, they, they can get through the zoning, ZBA can't do a thing about it. And, and there's no, no, uh, sewer system there either, and it's on a hill. Now, they, if they put in a septic system, goes right down, if, so it's gonna drain into the DCR. Now the, now that's a problem, but they can get by planning board, they'll get by ZBA. So this, so that's the kind of thing that they'll, they'll use. Now, the other problem here is, in talking to the Board of Health, they said, how did you ever, like on seventy-one Lee Street, that shrimp farm, how did you ever issue drilling a well against the, against the, uh, so close to the aquifer? The zoning law says you can drill anywhere you want, as long as it perks. And if you look at the soil in this whole area, heavy loom, and then below it is sand, gravel. Lot of sand and gravel, it's part of the recharge. Now even Lee Street, where the wells are, that was a sand and gravel pit there.
So is that, is that one of the possible suggestions that, that, uh, that you might be interested in looking at? Is sort of trying to regulate where and how far along?
Yes, definitely, I, I've just finished that and I'll bring it out and more. So, I do, and then a septic system was put in there with it draining directly into Malden Brook next to the wells. Now the Z, the, the Board of Health says, there's nothing we can do. If it perks, it doesn't matter where it perks in town. If it perks, it doesn't matter where it perks in town, we can do, issue a permit. I said, how deep are those wells? She said, we don't have records of the depth. They gave me all of the details of how it's done. And what they do is, if you want, you can, anybody can drill a well anywhere in the whole aquifer area. They, they drill that well, it'll perk, doesn't matter. It'll go in, it'll get into the gravel, it'll perk. Now, if it, and, and what they do, they get engineers and so forth, and they get it passed. It passes the perk test, they can do it. To me, that's also very bad. I don't think wells should be drilled and, artesian wells should be drilled in the town of West Boylston without some kind of control on them, because people are dipping into the aquifer.
Are you aware of any other towns that have bylaws around?
I'm not certain of that.
Is anybody?
But I, I, I think if there is or isn't, it doesn't matter. I think we should understand.
I was just wondering from a, you know, standpoint of...
I think it's a problem that's been overlooked innocently. Make it absolutely clear, I have nothing whatsoever against the Board of Health. The Board of Health is doing it honestly and correctly according to the law, but the Board of Health also now understands the problem.
I just want to clarify the problem. Is the problem that we're going to disrupt the level of the water and maybe make the town wells less, have less capacity, or are you worried about contamination?
Contaminate the water. You can contaminate the water. I think those, you can, of course, have less water, but you can contaminate it and...
But that's the, it's protection of the safety of the water supply, not the quantity of the water supply.
They're both a factor. Now, I believe there's, it's possible to get water, and in some discussions I've had in other parts of town, as deep as 700 feet in West Boylston, but that's another different issue. But the big issue is the recharge that's say, under 100 feet. Now, the, so to me, it's got to be stopped, that there should be no more artesian wells in the town of West Boylston without whatever it takes, going through the zone, through the Board of Health, Planning Board, or some kind of regulations. There should be no more artesian wells without the town clearly knowing, and also the depth of the wells. Now, the, that's important. Now, the other problem is, I think, and I can explain in, in time, the real reasons of the DCR CRs and DCRs, but I think any property that is near those DCR CRs, they're not put in there because DCR was trying to be a land baron. DCR is interested in Boston water, but the underground water is also important to them also. So any, any subdivision or any sewer system should be prevented from a certain distance from those designated DCR lands. So, because another little gimmick that the clever builders will use is they'll do it on the street, and they won't subdivide.
I mean, it's, it's an interesting question. It's something I can at least look into, see whether other towns, and if so, what have other towns done in this area? Be interesting to know.
I just want to, I know you're limited on time, I'd just like to say one, and I'll be willing to come back and do whatever you want. We have to understand this town, as far as the water. I think everything should be done to protect the whole water system of the town. I pointed out there how the iron contamination could get in the wells. The three wells have been welded shut, but there's no reason why the town can't dig more wells on Lee Street. So there's Malden Brook, and then there's Gates Brook. Gates Brook goes over down Route 12. Gates Brook is a lost cause. Route 12 is totally demolished, it's the swamps, the wetlands, everything built over. So it's a hopeless situation. So as far as West Boylston and water concerned, it knows the topography, et cetera, of Malden Brook, and laws to be done to prevent, to protect it. And again, I summarize, I think we have to think like these developers and people who are trying to do this. We have to consider why DCR is here, and I can explain that, and as I say, I'm not employed by DCR as spokesperson for DCR. I speak honestly. But to summarize it, we should not allow any more artesian wells without some kind of policing of them. We should be very careful of any septic systems that are put in. We should be very careful of any housing developments that require sedimentation ponds and, and the issues, I think, are more than the planning board, but the planning board makes these regulations. Now, as far as I-190 and those issues, I can go into detail. I'm not now, but I'll, I'll, I'd be, I'm not here to make problems, I'm here to be honest. I feel strongly for the town, I appreciate all you people, all of the committees, but you are a new generation, and that's nothing against any of you. But I think we have to gain and save what we've got.
Absolutely. It's certainly an important issue. I mean, I would hope that, you know, my children would be living in this town a long time, so.
Department of Environmental Protection, there is groundwater protection district by law, so.
You can take a look at that.
Yeah, take a look at that.
Great, all right.
And we may want to check with the Water District, because they may have a couple tweaks for our aquifer protection.
The EPA will get involved in this.
Well, they have some guidelines out there, so.
All right. Well, this is, this is very helpful.
But we have to think of even more than guidelines, we may have to think of making our own guidelines.
Well, yeah, they, yeah, they have.
It's a starting point, at least. What have other folks done in this area, and is that suitable for us, or, or isn't it?
You've got to bring out a sound point. What is the precedent?
Yeah.
Well, I didn't go around checking the different towns, I just, go after what we're up against.
That's what I was going to say, is it a bylaw? Is it a, like, where, where would this control come from? I don't, I don't quite know.
This says bylaw.
For example, I mean, our stormwater bylaw is a general bylaw, it's not a zoning bylaw. So, but we can, we can work all that out. It's, it's a good introduction to the issue, so I thank you very much for that.
And I'll be happy to come back. I'll be happy to focus on anything you want me to focus on, and I'll stick to the point. It's the planning board, I understand that, okay. Thank you all for listening to me.
It's good to see you.
Good to see you too.
Have a great evening and stay warm out there.
I will.
It's chilly.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
This is a model.
Yep, okay, yes.
I received an email today from the Building Inspector of the night-conforming users and structures.
This is yours?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
And I guess there's some confusion about the one year and the two year.
Yeah.
Okay. I know that according to the, our bylaws, the town bylaw, it says one, because this is the situation that came up with.
You're talking about an abandoned sort of grandfathered structure?
Right, right. And I know that it came up with the old motels, and there was a thing about one year, two year. Well, the town has one year, but the state has, says two years, and the state overrides the town. And I know that you guys are going to be changing that to two years.
Yep.
So I just wanted to know. And the other thing, one last thing, is about the accessory apartments. I had a conversation with the Building Inspector today, and I am going to write up a proposal for the accessory apartments and submit it to the Board.
Good to know.
Because I, there's just too many unknowns and ifs, and, you know, I don't think that, that right now, the way it sits, is the way that it's being used. I don't think it's being used properly, so I'm...
Who are you sending that to?
To you.
To Arbor, okay.
Yeah, no, that's great, it's helpful.
And I'm going to ask the, the Building Inspector to give me some guidelines on, you know, on some of the things too, because I want to make sure that we get the, the right...
Because those are certainly the two offices in town that are doing the heavy lifting with respect to accessory apartments, so that's, that's good.
I knew that was your priority when I saw this list.
Absolutely, so thank you for that.
Well, actually, my, my priority, similar to what, similar to what Dr. Tashian said, you know, especially after this, this petition that came up, and now, you know, with Chris pointing it out to me, into the Board, that there's a specific line that deals specifically with the aquifer, but there's nothing in the write-up that, you know, matches up to it. And so that's what I want to see. I want to see the aquifer, and then I want to see a specific write-up for the aquifer. If someone wants to build something and it's in the aquifer overlay district, then they have to stay with what it says, and there's no going to be ears standing butts away about it.
So no variance, no special permits?
Nothing, nothing. It'll stay, in my opinion, it should stay at 150 feet of frontage, 50,000 square feet.
Yeah, but you cannot generalize one aquifer and wetland.
Why not?
From all the entire town. This is unique, this has the town well, but if there is an aquifer and wetland from some other source, there is, nothing is there, so then they may come for a variance, they can come for a special permits. I'm just throwing.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have that discussion.
Then the discussion comes in.
As a part of, continuing this, do you want to put that as one of the bullet ones, like public water supply rules, or?
It's certainly...
Or just so we can see what, if we're going to ask people to rate or, you know, reflect, you know, we'll get that.
I'll put it in the draft and we can, we can, you know, hash it out again.
Just so you know about the recreational marijuana, you guys haven't started even thinking about it, the state doesn't even know what they're doing.
Yeah, I know, there's, it's...
I went to the, the training that they had across on Saturday, and I'll tell you, it was, it was a mess. I mean, there's just too many unknowns and too many ifs, and on March 7th of this year, the town of West, Westboro voted that they are going to absolutely prohibit recreational marijuana. And so the question was brought up, somebody asked, you know, can municipality do that? And they said, yes, because basically the, the state's going to, going to write a law, but the municipal, they're going to leave up all of it up to the municipalities, so I mean...
Yeah, but we can go to the next town, to Boylston.
Well, you can have, you can have a max of 12 plants.
Losing business, losing business here.
Well, isn't that, isn't that what's going on between the state and federal?
It's like the tobacco, tobacco.
Still federally.
Yeah.
I'd like to just reiterate what both have said. We've got a special problem on Prospect Street that's unique, and I think that has to be addressed specifically, because it has the immediate impact upon the well. Maybe another part of town, it might be different, but that has to be addressed and can answer some of the problems as the EBA is confronted with.
Okay. Yeah, in a way, it sounds, you know, somewhat similar to, you know, the aquifer overlay that we currently have, where it's targeted into certain, you know, sensitive areas in town, but there's certainly a reason to continue to take a closer look at that. All right. So in the interest of time, we'll table the rest of that discussion until next meeting. So Melanie, we'll keep this on, on the agenda for, for next time around.
Can't wait.
And in the interest of time, why don't we pull up, then, Mr. Cromack, if you, if you want to come forward? Thank you for appearing this evening.
Yeah, happy to.
I think, I think you said you, you had to drive to town twice today.
This is the second time I've been here. I live in Greenfield, it's about an hour and a half away.
Oh, wow.
But I got back, you know, 1:00 in the afternoon, and I got a whole lot of work done, and I left at 6:00 to get here at 7:30, so.
So I do have the submission right here. It looks like we have, you provided more than enough copies for what we need.
I think the requirement was 12, so that's what I did.
So we're all set there.
Dismal puppy?
That was the other thing, the only other thing that I was going to ask is, do you have any, any of this, all of this, most of this in an electronic form?
All of it, I have.
That you can actually email to Melanie?
So that's fairly large file, but I can FedEx you a CD if that works.
I'm trying to think of what's the best way to get it to the reviewer, to the town's consultant engineer, rather than just, you know, sending them this, this packet via FedEx.
How big?
If there's an easier way to do it.
Well, some of these, I don't know, 10 megabytes, no, that's, that's not like, some of these...
They're good-sized files.
They're fairly good-sized files, might be 100 megabytes.
Oh.
I'd be happy to put it on a CD though. Yeah, it gets a little troublesome, kind of email, all that.
Yeah.
It's in the domain, she'll fix it.
I don't mind putting it in the override envelope.
Can you send it over to the HP?
Yeah.
Do you have Wayne's email address? You just have him send that directly?
Don't have it with me, but I can...
Yeah, how about that? We'll provide you with his email.
Okay.
And if you can just send that directly, that, that will help facilitate the review process and make sure that we can get ready as quickly as possible.
I will zip this, if he has WinZip.
No, you can, you can send a CD to him, CD, I'll give it to him.
Or contact him, he might, he's a big company, he might have an FTP site.
The next day, FedEx is next day. FedEx will be next day.
If it gets there, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not worried about FedEx.
Technology is there. We are not taking...
I'm not worried about FedEx. We actually talked about this win in last October or so, and it's been this long to get it. I'm worried that it's going to get lost in the process, and Wayne's not going to get it, and then we won't get something from Wayne, and that'll extend our review time. And I know the town, the fire chief doesn't want that. So the faster we get it to Wayne, the better. That's, that's really the trigger. The rest I can review and do the general stuff, yeah.
Yeah, actually, I think the primary, I mean, there's a number of reasons for me to be here today, but the primary reason is not to talk about what's been submitted, that's really, we're hearing.
We're just, exactly.
I need to talk about the public notice mechanics.
Right here. So if, if somebody else on the board wants to disexpise it to me, so right now, we've got, that we can schedule a public hearing for this, again, assuming that we can get this to the engineer in the next, say, day or two, that we can do it on Wednesday, April 26th, here at 7:00.
I have it done.
And so what that would entail, so that's just over and off from now.
That's fine.
And the reason, part of the reason why we need to wait, we can't do it our very next meeting, we have to wait to the meeting after, is because in our bylaw, we've got to give the departments in town 30 days or so for them to review and provide us with any feedback.
Okay. We are, I don't want to say so far behind, but we've had to reschedule this project so many times that it, it is going forward anyway without this new radio system. We had to do a workaround to that. I mean, we'd obviously like to have the radio system, the new one, working as soon as we can, but realistically, it's not even going to be ready by the cut over or go-live date for the 911. I don't know if you're aware of, but April 4th, it's a Tuesday, probably early in the morning, but no later than noon, if you dial 911 in West Boylston, it's going to go to Holden. That will happen on the 4th, that's a definite, forever after that, yes.
Okay.
Well, unless you make a deal with somebody else.
Do we have to change, I guess, all right, just aside the question, this is handled independent of our phone systems, like if you have VoIP or something like that?
Right. That is a Verizon issue that I absolutely have nothing to do with. That's the state 911 department. the state nine-one-one department. Um, so that will happen and we've done some changes to the radio, to data. We have data, we have telephones, we have, you know, radio, two-way stuff, we have a lot of different technologies that we have to haul from here over to Holden and, uh, we're sufficiently ready with all that. I would, I mean, after all, you have police and fire that are communicating right now, you know, adequately, maybe not ideally, but adequately. So the, the date had to be picked, it's April 4th and this system will come online after, without a doubt, after April 4th, but we'd just like to, you know, not have it come on, come online in July or August.
That's the contact information for, for the engineer.
So I just had a couple of simple questions on the public notice process.
Sure.
Um, I guess going down, it's a short list too, fortunately. Um, is it, the applicant is actually the town of West Boston.
Okay.
And, uh, it's on town land, actually, I think the water district thinks they own the land, but, uh, I haven't found, anyway. Um, so I've got letters from both the, um, town administrator or signature on the app from the town administrator, Anita, and, uh, I've got a letter attached, uh, from the water district because it's really their, their water district piece of, you know, land, uh, so their, their consent to this whole project is, you know, given, uh, so that's the signature side of it. The question I have is, I'm the one presenting this project because, um, well, I'm being paid by state nine-one-one to make this project happen in a number of different dimensions to the project, but, um, I'm not sure that Cromack Industries should be the one that receives back the return receipt card, it should be probably the town, I suspect. Um, so what is your pleasure on, on that?
Well, I mean, I, I don't think it's, it's that significant who gets it, who receives them back, it's that they get collected and that the abutters, that we have some evidence that they were notified.
Well, I will definitely send them certified, which by itself, without even a return receipt card, allows me to track it, if I see whether it got delivered or, or there was a reason why it couldn't get delivered, so we'll know all that, even if the return receipt card never comes back. Just that, um, there are instances that I run into more than I'd like to where the card never comes back. Uh, that's why it's nice to be with a computer, you know, scan barcode and stuff with that and to be able to scan how far it went in the system. There are some people that just won't sign a return receipt card, where I've got a couple of addresses here, like the State House for DCR. DCR is listed three times in this abutters list, uh, one address, the, uh, Causeway Street is where their office is in Boston, that's where everything should go, not to the State House in Boston, but that's one of the addresses listed for one of the parcels. So I'll send it there, uh, but I don't think it's coming back from there.
So what, what do you wanna...
So the point is, I don't want, I don't wanna be the one that has to say, well, I didn't get these cards because you don't know whether I got them or not, I'd like to have them come back to the town, so...
I think you are the representative for the town, so the representative does the collection and pulls it all together and that's, whether you have it sent to the town and you get it from the town and then bring it over to us, that's fine with me. However you wanna get those green cards, you get the green cards, you bring them into the meeting at the public hearing because you submit those in advance at the beginning of the public hearing, you say, okay, I made the notice, it was done on these dates and the telegram...
Or it couldn't have been done.
And that these green cards are what I returned and two of them that went to the North Pole never got returned. That's fine, so as long as you sent it out and there's a record that you sent it out, you notified the abutters as best you can.
Or if you print out that, that scan...
Right, exactly, I will do that. So if you, without objection, I would like to have the cards come back to your town administrator.
Yeah, but we don't know whether she will, uh, see likes to receive it.
Right, I, I mean, so...
Yeah, we don't have to...
But it's not our decision, it's not our deci- if he wants to have them sent to anybody, he could have them sent to his brother-in-law and it doesn't matter where they go, as long as you come in with those at the meeting.
Well, I'll have them sent back to me if that's okay with you.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, well, then I'll do that.
They can go back to anybody, as long as they come in at the public hearing.
I think that, that's just 'cause then you, you can collect them.
Yeah.
Okay, that answers that, that was one of two big questions. Um, the, and of course, you, I, I did the abutters list, that's been certified by the assessor's office, so that's part of the package. When I originally created this, this past weekend, actually put it all together, I had your Form J or whatever it was that's in the package, the, what I found for a butters.
All the subdivision forms.
There's a few other, uh, butters on the list that, um, uh, didn't occur to me, um, like, well, they're not property owners, they're, they're, um, like, for example, the cell tower next to where we wanna go, they're not a property owner, nearest that I can tell, they don't have a deed, but they're, they're listed on, you know, on your property, on your site maps, town maps to, um, as a thing there, for lack of a better...
They don't have a deed, the, who has a deed for the...
I can't find a deed for that. Online, all the deeds go back...
For the property you're building on?
We're building on town property, or, or water district property. And then there's a cutout there for, um, what now is SBA, um, towers.
Who owns that, that's...
Um, I think that isn't owned by SBA, they must have a land lease or...
They probably have a lease with a right notification.
Right.
So you just notify them too?
So you notify them too, so I don't have, there's like five people on the list or six, um, that's not a problem. Um, so that's item one. Item two of two, uh, again, fairly simple, but I just needed to check it out, is the, I assume it's the Worcester Telegram, um, notice.
Yes.
Do I take, actually, do you have a copy of that?
So I have a copy, um, we, we may talk about, I, I, I may wanna add an additional section.
Mm-hmm.
So we, right in there, we list section three point six, which is the, our site plan review section.
Uh-huh.
But I may also wanna add the section that talks about the special permit.
You need a special permit notice too, right?
Like, it does mention special permit, I just wanna put in the, the actual...
If you want, uh, rather than us kinda scribbling things now, if you wanna just email me what...
That might be, do you have that electronically? All right, yeah, so...
Make any changes you want.
Can you send that to me tomorrow, Friday, and then, um, I'll, I'll add in the section, um, and I, and I can email it, uh, to, to the both of you. Uh, and it has the two dates on, on which they, it needs to run in, in a TNG.
All right.
That will be there. Um, but beyond that, I think, I think that answers your question.
Right, and so I go to the Worcester Telegram and I don't mind paying for it, but I actually am the one that goes and inserts it or goes to their cir-, you know, ad department or whatever, uh, and the only thing that I may run into is they're gonna say, are you with the town?
Oh, no, they won't.
They won't, they don't care, as long as, as long as they get their...
Most engineers will check.
Okay, all right, fine. Then, as soon as this is finalized, I will immediately have this, you know, scheduled to run it on these dates in the newspaper and we'll immediately send out the, uh, notices, certified return receipt to, um, the abutters, um, and then we'll look forward to seeing
I think seven o'clock.
Guys on the hearing date.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, um...
April twenty-sixth.
Seven o'clock.
And actually, I was looking at our file, you came in and talked to us and I thought we kinda gave you the go-ahead at our November fifth or sixth meeting, or the first meeting in November, and so that was November, what, what's happened from November until now? How come it's taken so long?
Uh, well, a couple of funding procurement problems, but, um, not problems, but issues, but mostly what happened is winter. We said, I put out a bid in September, we received, um, bids from tower contractors on October, October 3rd, I think, and they all expected to build this thing before winter and with all the tower projects I've ever worked on, you can pretty much count on going in through most of December before you really call it winter, um, except in an exceptional year. Uh, we didn't make, uh, the end of the year with this project and then we had to, um, re-diver- because of, some of the costs came in over what we had anticipated, we had to rearrange things to get funding, you know, lined up. Meanwhile, the tower vendor, um, is saying, well, I didn't price this to build it in the middle of the winter, I priced it to build it when it was nicer weather, um, so that's why I'm not complaining too much about the slight in time is because we, if I can't twist the arm of the, I couldn't have twisted the arm to have them build it in January or February anyway. Um, and we had some radio issues too, there's a lot of, a lot of issues, but...
Yeah, no, I just, I didn't want it to seem like the planning board is slowing the project down.
No, no, you're not, not at all, it's, uh, the slowdown is on, actually, uh, it's the state nine-one-one department. It takes, when we go for what they call a budget modification, it takes them forever to turn that around.
The state is slow?
Yeah, absolutely.
No.
So we have...
I just, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't the planning board.
No, it was not.
People could say, well, the planning board, it held, got held up at the site plan review stage and...
No, no, no.
As long as it's clear that it's not, that's fine.
Appreciate your concern, but, no, it was held up at the, uh, we have the money, we've always had the money to build this, um, but, um, the way they get money allocated in chunks and then if you have to take that chunk and divide it up into three vendors instead of one big one, uh, that's a budget modification, even though it's the same money, uh, and that has to be approved and so the accounting on this is kind of a nightmare, but we are...
I just was thinking, if our zoning, 'cause we're talking about zoning changes, if there's something in the zoning that was messing you up and really made a problem, then...
Well, I actually read the zoning, and this is no exaggeration, I read the zoning bylaw you have, uh, at least six times, cover to cover, because I was wrestling with how would we wanna apply for this thing and base, contrast that against other projects I've done in the past and where they had overlay districts and I had to go back and forth and convince myself that the way we applied for it was the correct way, uh, given that we have two different processes, we have a site plan review and then we have a special permit part of this and did I do that correctly? Um, I believe I have, but you'll let me know, I'm sure.
Yeah, well, they go together, so...
Right.
It was intended to make it smoother instead of making confusing, so that you just have to go through one process instead of doing it twice.
And there's some context and history in the cover letter that I wrote, um, that I always write on a project, so kinda tell you where, why, you know, who's, why we're doing this and that kinda stuff.
No, that sounds good.
Um, so that is all good stuff for the, uh, public hearing, but I did wanna make sure that we, we kept, uh, we didn't lose any more time, we kept moving on, uh, the public notice part of this, uh, it was worth my drive out here just to make sure that, you know, plus I had to go pick up some documents and leave off some documents here, so it was worth the two drives to West Boston and then now the, about to be the second drive back to Greenfield. Um, actually, I've been in this town probably, I, as we get closer to, uh, not only just cutover but past finishing these systems, I would be probably here three or four times a week, you know, for the next two months anyway. So I'm kinda, my car knows the way to West Boston automatically, it's autopilot.
So, so, so why don't we do that? So I will reach out to you either tomorrow or Friday, just with the updated, it'll be a minor amendment to that, uh, but it will be updated, so, so, so don't run that one.
No, I won't, but in the meantime, I can, my office, I've gotta create labels and, you know, return cards and all that kinda stuff, um...
Perfect.
Which we'll take care of. Well, thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
Please send that, uh, CD to Wayne.
Yes, I will, you want a copy for your board as well?
I think we've got enough here, we've had that.
Do you have the digital copy?
They need a digital copy, huh?
You wanna just bring it to the, um...
Next, yeah, one of us.
Oh, certainly.
Bring it to the hearing. I think, yeah, we could either take that or when we get them finally approved, then we'd probably get a digital copy at the, after the approval.
Right, actually, one thing I was gonna point out at the hearing, but it's probably worth saying now, uh, and again, trying to understand the process and what part do we do for the planning board or what part do we do for the building, uh, department, is there is a site plan, um, I'm sorry, not site plan, we, there is a, uh, construction control document process that we go through.
Yeah, for those for them.
But that's for the building inspector and the building permit.
Yes.
And I should point out that when we originally put this tower out to bid, uh, the assumption, and I won't blame anybody, but the assumption was that we were gonna go straight from a tower vendor to a building permit, uh, and it wasn't until I met with you folks last November that we discovered, no, we were not going to go directly to a building permit, we were going to do this process in the middle. Um, that's not the vendor's fault, um, I, I don't wanna say it's not necessarily my fault either, I built that into the process. Uh, that's again, why I'm here and why Timberline Construction is not here, is because it's not in their scope to get the special permit, um, it's in my scope. Um, but once the special permit, uh, is granted, then the ball goes back to the tower vendor and it's up to them to go pull the, whatever necessary permits, electrical, you know, we don't have any plumbing, anything like that, no water sewer, but, uh, plum, the electrical, you know, whatever they need, the building permit, it's up to them to pull that and that's, that's back in their court.
Is there another antenna that receives this signal someplace, like in Holden, or...
Uh, we're currently using Lawrence Street, the, the cell tower at Lawrence Street where the water tank is and the, um...
I was just wondering, how the, the permitting process going in other towns?
Oh, I mean, where have I done this, other places, or...
I was related to this project or not, right?
To the shared services?
Well, I mean, like, have you put up an antenna in, uh...
Well, yeah, I, I, I did this a couple of years ago in Princeton.
Okay.
Because the first town to join the regional center that's out of Holden is Princeton. Uh, we had to build a tower, a fairly expensive tower there because of the short, small amount of land, it was literally in the parking lot of the town hall, um, we had to put in a self-supporting tower, uh, those are enormously more expensive than a, this is a light, when you see the, read the write-up on this, it's a very light duty guide tower, eighty feet high, um, that's only designed to hold a couple antennas anyway, just so it's, it's a small visual footprint. I think when I was here in November, I brought some photos of, uh, I'll probably do that for the hearing of what...
Yes, you did.
It doesn't look like a monstrosity, um, like, uh, the cell tower that's right next to it look, does look like. This is the cell tower next to it.
I'll bring that up to hearing too.
Um, that's loaded, that's fully loaded, yeah, okay, you, yeah, that's not much of a visual footprint, uh, whereas that sorta is a bigger visual, and if we went on that, we'd have to exceed height issues and, uh, we don't wanna go there, so...
But in, when you were in Princeton, did you do what you were talking about where you go from contractor to building permit and...
No, no, I did a, I did the same kinda presentation for Princeton, I did the, uh, special permit. There wasn't site plan review there, but there was a special permit requirement. Uh, and they did, again, have a, a communications overlay district, a little bit different than yours, but more or less, they all read about the same. Um, so, um, that's pretty, I know there's other things to do. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I'll be in touch and, uh...
Yeah, so you have my email, I guess, and we've talked already, so...
We'll see you on the twenty-sixth then.
Sounds good.
I look forward to it.
Right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate you, have a good night. Drive safe. Yeah. You don't forget to get some sleep.
Yeah.
All right, so we've got these, does anybody, does anybody...
Seventy Hartwell.
Sure. If anybody wants a copy, I think there's a, a couple, I see that, yeah.
I wanted to...
All right, so, yeah, let's move on, so Seventy Hartwell, the, the update, um, that we received since the last meeting was, uh, so Wayne sent an email saying that, um, that they had have, I think, I don't know if it was Mr. Lyden who did go ahead and have a so Wayne sent an email saying that, uh, that they had have, I think, I don't know if it was Mr. Lyden who did go ahead and have a meeting with the engineer, uh, for Seventy Hartwell. And I guess things there are progressing sort of as they should and so, so they're in contact now.
Okay.
I haven't seen any recent, by recent, I mean within the last week or two, inspection reports. But Wayne didn't seem concerned. He seemed to indicate that things are sort of building as, as he expects at this, uh, at this juncture of the project.
That's at Seventy.
Seventy Hartwell, yes.
I waited for that. They have the foundation with, and I, I look at it every day.
How's it going?
Yeah, how's it going?
We got the entire, I might, might be using the wrong term, but all the concrete is in for the, for the foundation. They're now digging the holes and they have probably more than half of the, uh, roughly six by six concrete forms that are going to hold the, the supports for the roof and all. Those are all in the middle. Uh, steel was supposed to come this week, but it's probably going to not come until next week.
How about around the edges with the drainage in the parking lot? Is that kind of?
They, they haven't done the drainage. They got most of the berms in that they promised us.
Okay.
The amount of trees on. There's, uh, probably another fifty to eighty feet that has to be done at the, at the angel block end, the far, the far side. But, uh, like you said, when you first came through, uh, it was boring. So, there was a lot of sand.
Yeah.
But there was a lot more rock than they thought too.
Oh, really?
We went through weeks of.
Oh, really?
Yeah, on the side of the, of the slope.
Yeah, going up the hill.
To the west.
Yeah.
The slope to the west, because the building actually doesn't follow the same exact lines of the original one. The, uh, the eastern side is straight line. The western side is about twenty or thirty feet.
Right, yeah, jumps up.
Towards the, uh, the hillside.
But the concrete on that side's up, so that, that, I think that wall was taller on that side.
That's a taller wall, yeah. That's all, that's all, any bit of it is all there. So, they're just, uh, hoping the weather cooperates enough to get steel. They figured, uh, ten to twelve weeks to get steel up, once it's here.
Ten to twelve?
But then they have to decide work and all that kind of stuff too. But it's, it's amazing. If you drive up there, if you had any notion what was there
Yeah.
and what you see now, it's like, it's just crazy, crazy, crazy.
And where's my ninety-nine?
Hey, man, glad I gave you the report on that.
You know more than we do. Thanks for coming.
Okay, guys.
Thank you very much. Have a good night. Uh, yeah, and then just the, uh, the, uh, the only other update, again, from Wayne. I mean, I haven't noticed that there was some work going on up front, that it, he made a remark that it looked as if it was sort of ready for paving out front. I know, I know we talked last meeting.
Right here.
Yes.
So, this area's been changed, BHP asked to do inspection.
So.
No, just the minutes.
Yeah, so, so I guess that, that, that sort of question that I had was.
The significant change?
Yeah. Do we know whether what's going on is?
Well, it's a change, so they should be coming in to talk and decide, and we decide.
Could anything be a significant change from, there's no outs, there's no changes to the outside of the building? I mean.
It is, I mean.
I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to cost a Brady any more money, but I mean, like.
We're going to get started with the presentation.
What the heck? I mean, really, just, I don't know what it's up to.
Andy, ninety-nine Hartwell?
I could go and find out.
Is it in the room maybe?
Yeah.
Do you want to look at the plan and see what it's supposed to look like and if?
Yeah, that's, I don't have a good recollection for.
It was, it was a minimal plan, I think, because they said they weren't going to do anything.
Well, I agree, but if it's, they weren't going to do anything, it was only a five-foot grass strip and then it was a building and they're paving three strips that are twenty-four foot wide into that across the five-foot grass strip, then that's not that big a deal. But if all the parking is right up against there and it's.
A thirty-foot grass.
Preserve the whole. That would be a, a different story. I, I.
There's going to be so much more water going into waste management's.
Don't say those things. Get calls again from the lawyers of somebody else.
I mean, I, I.
I don't remember what it was, so.
I don't either. I don't think we can dwell on it because we, we, we're, okay, we're not going to stick to you for drainage because you're not changing it, you know? It maps what he promised and.
Yep.
Now, I don't know he's done.
Right.
Is still a problem with the ninety-nine?
That's what we're finding out.
Well, that's the problem, is he's still changing it. Like, we thought he was done, but then you drive by and it's all different.
Has anyone talked to the building inspector about it, what his thoughts are, whether, he's the one monitoring it?
No.
Wasn't he here at one meeting?
Oh, oh, he was at one meeting, but I don't.
Did he talk about this one?
No. I don't think he talked about this one.
Boom, she knows.
We don't know yet if it's the right one. Hold that thought. I know you're puning. Is this the one, or is it one of the other ones I have?
It's not the side one.
Let's see which one this one is. These are the two I have handy.
That's not it.
This was just a drainage change.
I'll let me go back to.
No, that's, that's a.
Oh, this is the one you want?
Yep.
Wow. It's a monster. That's it? He did that much? Are you sure?
Sure what?
I didn't think he did that much work.
It's, that's standard. So, this is what it was. He was proposing to work in the back. The street is here, Hartwell Street?
Yeah.
He wasn't going to change any of this. There's a driveway with parking spaces. You're now saying that they're going upstairs, they got?
I don't know if the stairs are even there, but like, the, there used to be stairs and like some windows or nothing along the front.
Yep.
It's like an office kind of building. And now there's a, you know, garage, a garage, a garage, a garage, and I assume pavement going right up to the garages.
So, where, where are the parking spaces that are, I mean, they're not going to be able to use these parking spaces, so.
It's not the same, it's not this configuration. I don't know if they cut this off or change around it's, but I wouldn't, I would say it's not the same as, like, there's, there's no grass here. This is all paved, all, well, I noticed over here, I don't know about there.
It's a forest?
Yeah.
Are you allowed to take pictures?
A plus. We'll see.
It was concerning me, you know? I wanted to go cruise around in the, uh, well, not enough device storage.
Deleted it? What I'm looking for is what does he require for parking?
It's going to be on this somewhere, right?
Parking table. Number one. Seventy-nine, he's got ninety-six, so he could take out twenty. Well.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, eighteen? Seventeen, you're right. Good math. So, he could take out seventeen, so it's possible. Then he takes out, because that's a nine, eighteen foot wide, so he takes three, six, nine, he still has the number of parking spaces he needs, so.
And it took.
But then he's got, if this is all paved, then he's going to have to, when he puts pavement in, he's going to have to do something about drainage. Because it makes pervious where the water can go in the ground to impervious.
So, there's the building now and there's no pavement there anymore. It's like all dirt, like he's tearing it up to do something else?
But that's, I mean, it's four feet higher here to here. It's a four-foot difference in elevation. How's he going to drive up to those?
Well, no, he, he's got it, he's like graded it. You know, it's, and now it's a.
Are those truck bays?
Yeah, this is, this is the, yeah, zoom out. That's the front of the building now. It used to not look anything like that, you know?
Yeah.
And, and he's, it looks like he's torn the pavement up, like, right here, this edge is right here, that corner.
Yep.
You know, but then it looks like he's, oh, geez, oh no. It looks like he's cut the pavement off like right here. That's that line approximately right there.
Right.
And it's dirt since there, and he graded it, so it goes up to the front of the building with less, you know, with not a.
Yes, that makes sense. So, that's a whole different change here.
Yeah, that's what I mean. I mean, it's not the same building and it used to be offices there and now you could drive a car in, you know, I mean.
So, um.
So, we can say, call that insignificant, I guess, and then we can just sort of let them keep going and whatever.
We could, but I wouldn't.
No, I mean, and, and I guess.
So, do we want to ask the building inspector to, has he issued him his occupancy permits or has he done?
He's probably done, yeah. But I don't know.
Well.
I could send an email to the building inspector.
And just check the status of it, because it seems like a significant change from the approved site plan review and ask him what the, ask the building inspector what he thinks. Does he think it's okay or is he?
Yeah.
I mean, it looks, from the photograph, looks like he needs to come before us, but.
Well, we should invite him to come before us and just tell us what he's doing, because it's, it's certainly not, not affecting the front of the building. I mean, he's torn up all the pavement for one thing, you know, I mean.
I hear you. But if the building inspector, who's a zoning enforcement person, says everything's okay, then we can't do anything.
Do, do, uh, do you want me to send you a copy of this or should I just send it to the board, the pictures?
Send it to the board.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good job.
That was very helpful, actually.
Yeah.
Nice.
Very helpful.
All right. Can I be chair next?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Did you get my phone?
He did my phone too.
Jeez, one, two pictures. Yeah, that boy won't have a phone.
I've noticed that he's doing all these zoning changes.
You know, he's getting us lined up for a lot of work.
He might be that mozzoni.
Yeah.
And then they'll be over there on the.
Yeah. Quick update on the D L T A, if you recall.
Another project.
Did I see that? See that? Another one. Another one. This one actually is on the agenda though, so I can talk about it. So, I, I did hear back from, uh, Jeff Bag at C M R P C on this. Um, the D L T A Village Zoning Initiative was funded. Uh, he told me that. He told me there were, so there are two other towns that are going to be involved, Auburn and Holden and West Boylston. So, it's the three of us. Again, the first phase is them working on a, a model bylaw. Uh, it's too early, uh, he noted, to sort of schedule a first meeting, say, with, with the planning board. Um, but he, he expects to do that later on, I think in the, uh, maybe the late spring timeframe, once the, um, the bylaw is in place. And he also mentioned that, uh, or the model bylaw, I should say, is in place. Um, and he also mentioned, I think, that this would entail a total of about, I think, a hundred hours. What he didn't say was whether that was a hundred hours for West Boylston or a hundred hours for all three towns. So, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if it's a hundred for all three, so that we would get about thirty, thirty-five hours worth of sort of time, um, to, to, to work on this, uh, project.
Oh, okay. They, that's C M R P C engineering time?
Yeah.
Towards the.
Towards the, towards designing and coming up with, you know, a bylaw that's going to suit what, what we're, you know, interested in doing for our village.
And that's coming from the D L T funding?
Yes.
Right, so it's not going to cost us anything.
Right.
So, we don't have to go meeting again?
I wouldn't say that.
Well, I guess, I'm still wondering whether we need the village zoning, so the first phase may, we may be out after the first phase.
Yeah. That's, that, yeah, that's, that's certainly a possibility as well. Um, but at least for, for this first phase, we're, we're, we're one of three towns and, um, we'll, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll take that and, and move sort of, I guess, one step at a time, so.
Sure, yeah. I thought we did that whole first phase once already.
It didn't get finished, uh, is, 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 is what he mentioned. Uh, last, last year, they, they didn't end up getting sort of as, as far along the path. They ended up getting, I guess, in pretty deep with, with another town that ended up not working. It was, there was a whole story associated with that, but they ended up not finishing, um, a complete sort of model village bylaw for, for towns and central.
Because I remember when we did that walk, they had the model and actually.
And it stirred up a lot of.
The locals actually, they read it and said, oh, what are we, three stories and they're requiring all these things?
Yeah.
It wasn't a good model for us, so.
Sort of generic, non-central mass town.
Right.
Sort of related, but I think it was a, a statewide thing.
So, this work is going to update that and make it more focused?
Yes.
Good.
Yes, that's, that's the idea. That's the idea. Um, but at least the good news is, is that's, that's going forward, so, good there. All right, next thing on the agenda. How we doing time?
It's all right.
Not too good.
All right.
Not as good as the one when Cheryl wasn't here. I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, I know, I know what's going on. All right, so the, uh, we got an email from the town administrator regarding, um, updates to the, uh, the comprehensive plan that, that townwide planning, uh, is, is working on, specifically, uh, townwide planning and, uh, the town administrator was requesting feedback from this board, uh, to try and update sort of a land use chapter uh, for the, the comprehensive permit. And as I, as I read the materials, uh, that the, the town administrator sent along, I think there's copies of this stuff in, in your packets. Uh, but it seems like they're looking for, I mean, a, a, as she discussed when she was in front of the board a month or two ago, sort of a relatively short, three or four-page chapter, if you like, that includes a limited number of, of goals in, in the area of, of land use. So, maybe three or four goals and they provided a template as to what they're looking for. Um, they suggested that at this time, um, one of the ways to tackle this could be to take the master plan chapter on land use, uh, which I was just looking at earlier today and it's, I don't know, seventeen or eighteen pages long, something like that. And to begin looking at, at ways of sort of condensing that down and, and focusing that chapter into something that is, you know, easier to digest and something that is, uh, you know, a, a, maybe a little bit, um, a little bit more, more limited than, than what's there. Again, I, I don't know if, um, folks have questions or comments on that.
Not yet. I'm going to noodle that one too.
Okay. So, there, in, in the letter, she requested feedback, uh, by June first, so that gives us a couple of months to take a look at this. So, I don't know if, whether others agree or not, but I feel like it, it makes sense to maybe go back, read that section. I think it's chapter three of the, the master plan. Uh, the master plan is on the, the town website. It's on the, the townwide planning section of the website. There's a link directly to it. Again, I checked it today, so I know it's there. The whole master plan is there. The particular chapter that we're looking at is chapter three, as I said, you know, somewhere around twenty pages or so. If we start looking at that, um, and, you know, that may give us some, some ideas of sort of way to begin, unless.
Go open space.
Unless there are, there are other issues or, uh, uh, other factors that may, that we also may want to include or.
You got to read it first.
On our feedback that we might want to.
Noodle it.
No, go open space.
Read it and noodle it.
Noodle it.
Yep.
Open space.
Just, so, a couple of things that occurred to me when I was taking a look at the current master plan land use chapter. Um, it mentioned things, uh, because that was when, I guess, the, the sewer was going in in town and that, that was about to be completed. So, there was, there were, there was some, some, uh, description of, of that whole process. Um, there was also, um, some description of maybe trying to, with the sewer now in town, talking about the possibility of higher density residential development. I'm not sure whether that.
That's been addressed at least three times since then, but everyone, a few people keep asking and it just keeps getting the same answer, but.
Okay.
They just keep asking. I see with different people, the answer will change, but that, I mean, it's kind of a, it's been written down, but I'm not sure, as Dr. Tajin said.
Yeah.
Records are always tough to.
Yeah.
Come by, but I know that's been looked at, similar to the village zoning thing where we.
Okay.
Looked at it years ago when it was mentioned in this as well for, um, being evaluated. It was evaluated back, I think, in two thousand eight, but.
Do the people want high density?
Right. Yeah, people said no, but there is still a group, a small local group that wants to.
Newton Street?
Make it really dense. I don't think so.
Um, just, just a, a few other things as I was going through the, um, that chapter that, that caught my eye were things like the possibility of changing the zoning boundaries so that they, so that we don't have so many parcels that are split into two different districts. I know, Vinnie, you've talked about that in the past and that ended up being, I think, problematic.
Yeah, where we had, I think, twelve hundred lots that were split and trying to go to town meeting to get twelve hundred people to agree altogether. It's, the ones that don't like it, the ones that are going to show up. If we get a thousand of them to agree, that's still two hundred people that don't like the idea and at the time, we decided it wasn't really worth it.
Yeah.
Because the planning board, there was a report that was submitted and I'm surprised those are not included with the master plans. There were updates of what was done.
Yeah.
Those updates should be found to see that we're not redoing all the old work. That's what I was hoping. I thought the town, the townwide planning committee was the one that was getting all these updates.
Okay.
So, they should have some documentation. Uh, I think, I thought we mentioned that when Anita was here, but it doesn't seem like that's been incorporated, because that would cut a lot of the lead time down, so.
Yeah.
All the stuff that's been addressed, we go through and say, okay, this has already been addressed, boom, 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 and these are the things that are still outstanding.
All right.
Instead of going through everything.
I, yeah, let, let me follow up and, and see if those are accessible. Other, other things again that I just noted was, there was a recommendation to look at possible revising the, the schedule of use in the zoning bylaws, making sure that that is, you know, including all of the uses that, that we want to allow in town and, you know, is, I guess, not including or excluding uses that, that we want to, you know, either continue to, to not allow or, you know, things to, to reconsider moving forward.
Well, we may want to add that to our list of zoning things if that's something.
Yeah. Yeah.
That, I'm not sure what we wanna... I mean, how do you think of things that you haven't thought about already? If you don't... If you haven't thought about it yet, it's not just gonna come...
It's probably not pressing, but I'm just trying to think of, I mean, one of the things certainly...
You got that in the notes?
One of the things that I was starting to notice.
I'm sorry, Chris.
No, no, don't worry. Pick a handful of towns around here, take a look at theirs and compare with ours. See where the discrepancies are. Does it make sense? Does it not make sense?
That's... Yep, yep.
It mentioned we should have cluster zoning, and then in the bylaws, we do have cluster zoning. So that's one goal that's already been met. CPA was another one. That was another goal that was in there.
I mean, that's what I mean. We've done a lot of things. It's... Because the planning board has looked back and actually used the master plan to try to move forward. So there's a lot of stuff that's either been evaluated and changed or evaluated and implemented, so that's good.
All right. So I guess, again, this is something else that why don't we keep on the agenda for next time? If folks could, could, I guess, yeah, read that chapter between now and the next meeting, we can dig into that. And I'll also try and figure out if we can also get access to those updates.
I noticed earlier that Sumeola came for a few minutes.
Yeah.
And she's the contact.
Yep. So, yeah, at some point, we might wanna invite her to one of our discussions once, you know, once we're...
Was there a townwide planning committee tonight?
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, so maybe she came in the wrong meeting.
No, no, I think she came to find out who was going on.
Less than an hour. Well, it's just for... Who is our townwide planning committee person?
Oh, thank God.
Raj.
Mark.
Who? You? Oh, Raj, all right.
I'd never sign up for that.
Because it's just tough to go to both places, so it's...
No, I told them, and I kept either planning board on another day. All the members said no. Same thing coming from planning.
Oh, no.
Another day, they said they want to have all the meetings on Wednesday, Saturday.
So people might serve on one board?
That's what I'm doing.
Thank you.
I'm boycotting their townwide.
That's all right.
Maybe can we re-vote on the marks to be the applestratia for the townwide planning now?
To do what?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, we could do that right now.
We could.
Yeah, that would go well.
You want to do that, Mark?
No.
It's going to be again on Wednesday.
What am I doing?
All right, so that's... Unless there's other comments on that?
Also, that one?
We're not quite there yet.
Yeah.
What's the return? Wait, what did you say?
No, we're not quite there yet.
No, we'll be in the next.
Number three, Century Drive subdivision approval completion of the loop road. So this was one where, so I did look back at the meeting minutes, which was, I think, January, February of last year, to see, that was when they came in for the permit extension, and to see just if there was language in there that talked about, you know, completion of the loop road. And unfortunately, I didn't see anything in the minutes there. I don't know. Was anybody able to dig up the...
I went through the box and I couldn't find... I couldn't find anything recent in the box either, so that was...
Okay.
So it looks like...
All right.
I'm sure it was a comment, but it was one of those things that no one legally committed to anything.
Okay. All right. Yeah, again, I just wanted to make sure that, no pun intended, that we're closing the loop.
Right. Yeah, and I'm just, I was thinking about that site, that there are drainage easements for the stormwater system, and if they're gonna be encroaching on the stormwater system, they're also encroaching on those drainage easements, so there's gonna have to be some stuff. And they're lotting, if they're trying to do it in a side lot, if they could buy more of the property and then have the side lot, well, actually, it's not allowed in the side yard. So what's the, what's the specific wording in the bylaw? Is it, it cannot be in the side yard or within the side yard setback?
That's the...
Parking limitation?
Setback.
Because we wanted to have it in the rear, the side of the rear, and then she's on a lot, or the Girl Scouts want to be on a corner lot, which I guess gives them two front yards. So one, I thought one could be considered the front, one would be considered the side. And then they could put the parking on the side that's considered the side, because there's no parking in the front. But I don't remember where there is. I don't remember.
Is it page sixty-six?
Is this what you're... This might be what you're referring to, section four-one-B, talking about corner lots, you mean?
It was something about corner lots, and what does it say?
On all corner lots, the required front yard dimensions shall apply from both street lines.
That's the front yard dimensions. That's not the...
Yeah, one required side yard dimension shall apply from all other lot lines. In all cases, one street line shall be accepted as the front street line for the measurement of another frontage.
All right, yeah.
But I was thinking about, I mean, that, to me, that's almost, it's not really a corner lot, though, is it? Because it's all the same street, even though it's a ninety-degree terrain? Isn't it kind of all the same street? If you think about it?
They have to stop, so I don't know if it's...
Is there a stop there?
Yeah. Because it was originally supposed to go up and around the other way. But that's not, it's not built, so I guess it matters how you wanna do it.
Yeah. I don't know.
But those, I mean, that was the thing that...
But I mean, I guess maybe the time to look at that would be, you know, if we got a submission from them.
Well, I just, I guess I feel bad for the Girl Scouts if they do the whole plan and spend a couple thousand dollars for a plan, and then they knew that they just had to adjust it a little bit this way or that way.
Yeah.
And have to redo the whole plan and all the drainage stuff again.
We had talked to her about that. We also talked about the loading and unloading, like...
Yes, yeah, we did.
You can't do that in the parking spaces and stuff like that. We told her that.
Yeah.
Because they're using lead or a truck driver. I take a lot of good videos, by the way. That's true.
It's good.
Okay, all right, so I just didn't...
Yeah, and she was supposed to follow up with the building inspector, so hopefully that turned everybody's.
Yes. Okay.
All right. Moving on then, reports from other boards. I guess I only have one since the last meeting. Raj and I actually both attended the CMRPC meeting from just less than two weeks ago. And the topic, it was an interesting topic for discussion, was the MS4 stormwater permit standards that are, you know, going to be more and more of an issue as things...
They updated the permit.
Progressed.
Last week. It's actually gonna be, it gets, it starts in June, I think it is.
Yeah.
It's active in June. It was just posted as regulation in February, so it then becomes, whatever the phrase is, I can't think of it. It becomes real in June.
Yeah, and our DPW director was there as well, so...
He was? Okay.
Yeah, so that was...
He's working on that. He's working on it and also he's trying to talk to the Spencer.
Yes.
DPW.
Oh, yeah, Steve, he's good.
Yep, so he has all the, I think, you know, he was asking whether we have the plan on all the sewer lines and a lot of things.
Yep.
So we do.
It's somewhere, yeah.
Yeah, it should be there somewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's one of the things that DPW...
Yep, I think they have a sewer. I think they have the drainage. And when they put the sewer line in, it was all auto. There was CAD of the whole thing, so...
Do you have a copy?
No.
Reports from other boards?
Do you wanna do that thing from last night?
Our open space?
Well, that...
Two expectations, two expectations.
Well, it was three meetings.
Public forum, yes. Well, it was...
We should do it. He was on the board.
Two meetings. It was, uh, open space public forum was held last night. We had, I think, twenty-five or so people in attendance, and we got six...
It was incredible attendance, I thought.
It was. The place was full.
Right.
All the board members, right?
Yeah, we had a strong showing of the planning board, all except one. He wasn't gonna point out which one. I was gonna let that go.
It was me. I was a class.
So it turned, it was a good attendance. We got, I think, five phone calls, messages.
Oh, did we?
Yep.
Or did you?
Unfortunately, the phone was turned down, and I couldn't figure out how to turn the sound up so we would hear them, so they left messages, but that's all right. We have them. It's gonna get incorporated into the plan. Most all the comments were on bad sidewalks in town, even though we spent almost a million dollars in the area within a mile of the schools. We're still gonna, about the same amount of work to do, so...
Were they more or less complaining about Route Twelve?
No, there were some people asking for a sidewalk on Route Twelve. There were some on right by the library on Newton Street, which a lot of people use there.
Yeah.
Prescott Street going up to the mixture fields. And actually, there were a couple on Newton and a couple in, on Worcester, I mean, on...
Worcester Street?
Route Twelve, not on Worcester Street. So a lot of issues with the sidewalk that people are concerned with. The pool is a big thing that was a priority. People wanted to kind of get the pool moving. And Goodell Park master plan, that it was thought that it was on town website somewhere, but no, people couldn't find it. So I think it's gonna get found and put on the town website, so people can actually review it and evaluate it. Because it's phasing and costs need some consideration. That's what, in the open space and rec plan, it's gonna be written up that the parks commissioner has authority over that, so they're gonna consider it and take into consideration financial requirements, the needs in town, and space requirements, so... It's, even though the Goodell Park master plan is done and accepted, it's like every other plan in town, like the master plan. It always blends and changes, so... Same thing with the open space and rec plan. It's gonna change as we go, so... I think it was a good turnout. I'm hoping to get it finalized in the next month, so the planning board will be able to review it and sign off on it, maybe in April, but actually, probably May.
With that, you know, after the meeting, there was a person, she was asking whether that meeting was online, the live, and also it's online. So they did post at the meeting in YouTube, the spoils on YouTube.
Oh, it's on YouTube?
It's on YouTube.
Good, so people can actually, anytime.
Anyone can watch it.
On-demand TV. That sounds good.
Yes, it's only for the people who has the access to the internet.
Yeah, that's true too.
Right, too. With a good phone.
Go to the library.
Yeah, go into the library and check it. But, yeah, that's, I think it worked out well. We got a lot of good feedback. A lot of people spent time and read the thing, and you could tell it was, it was helpful, so... That was good. And then, in addition to the open space, it was also the, a meeting for the public forum for...
CMR.
Complete Streets.
Complete Streets.
Complete Streets prioritization plan. So the folks from CMRPC who were doing the plan were here with hard copy plans for people to actually scratch up, and people sat down and or actually stood there and took time and marked up the copies that were there, so they're gonna go back.
Dog parks too was also there.
Was?
The dog park was another part of the thing.
Oh, and the dog park was as part of the open space and rec plan, because that was in the survey. All the survey results came back, because the dog park was...
Where's the dog park goes?
We haven't actually decided yet. There were two sites that they talked about, but...
There was some concern about that other place, right?
Which one?
The...
Concern on both.
Tivyn.
Tivyn.
There is concern. Yes.
So the electric department is...
Well, the electric department, we had conversations with the electric board.
Yeah.
And they were on the impression, "Okay, let's use this area, the flat area right at Tivyn and Shrewsbury Street." What the board members that were talked to didn't realize was that there's, there's something about funding in the next phase of solar use, but it's gonna be difficult to get new solar licenses, but expanding an existing license will be easier. So now the light department wants to, when the newer phase type of solar stuff is available, and I may have the technical stuff wrong, but they want to use that area for an expansion of the existing solar... Excuse me, existing solar field that's there. So that's why they didn't want to have a dog park.
So if they want to add the dog park a little further...
It's gonna have to go up the hill.
So it's going to be uphill?
It's gonna go up the hill, and then that's gonna incur, it's still, there's twenty acres, I think. There's a lot of land. The issue is that it was down and level and flat.
And there's no trees to cut down and stuff like that.
And it was clear, right, so it was easy.
No, but it's going to be an uphill.
So it's gonna go...
Multi-level field.
Right. Well, that was why they preferred it.
They want to level it, so it's costing... Oh, that will cost a lot of money, right?
Well, the thing is, we're gonna apply for funding. We're gonna be applying for funding from Stanton.
Yeah, but that's only for the making a dog park, you know, they will do, they'll give you money for to level the things, too?
Uh, that's one of the things. They're actually in the process. It's ninety percent funding, so even if it costs us, instead of a hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars, the town has to raise another eight or ten thousand dollars more for doing the earthwork. Eight or ten thousand dollars is not too bad, and I think it can come from the CPA. We gotta look into the CPA money, and there is money available to do that.
I don't think the CPA money will...
It doesn't go in?
No.
It wouldn't be able to come out of the open space, the housing or the historic, but it could come out of the seventy percent remainder, I think, but that's...
Is there any other land, flat land in town?
Without a house on?
No, without a house, yeah.
Well, there were a couple. We talked about the ones that, like...
Goodell Park.
Goodell? No, we didn't talk about Goodell Park. We talked about nineteen Crescent.
Goodell Street.
Goodell was on the list.
Oh, Goodell, not Goodell Park, yeah, Goodell Street, that's up at two hundred or three hundred and something.
DCR probably.
It's owned by DCR up before Phelps Place, that back corner at Phelps Place on Goodell Street.
Yeah.
Just before that, on the left, is a pond, and there's a paved access up into the area that's DCR. And there's an area back there that is kind of level. It used to be an old tree farm.
Okay.
And it would be a nice spot for it, but there's a brook that comes, Malden Brook comes right down through there, and I find it highly unlikely that DCR would be supportive of letting a whole bunch of dogs roam around a stream that goes...
Do you think we can get some land from DCR?
I think that's, I think that's a selectmen conversation, not an employee of DCR's conversation.
Yes.
But, yeah, I mean, it's, they're different, and those options were put out by the open space committee, open space implementation in the park, so they have to have some discussions. That's why it's tending to go towards Tivyn Drive.
Do you think how much it may cost for leveling?
Where the dog park, there's a sub, a dog park, a subcommittee that's working on that, and they're...
How large of an area is it?
An acre and a half. It's not a huge area. It's just, it's an area, a fenced area for dogs, large dogs, and a smaller adjacent area for small dogs, sometimes a training dog. A training area.
Training dog, large dogs, small dogs.
I think a training area is nice.
Well, a training area would be something where they could actually have events and raise, do a little community events that might raise some money for financing. So that's, it's all been thought about. Milbury's doing it. The image that we had during the presentation last night was the actual layout sketch from Hyannis, who constructed it.
Was that where the picture came from?
Yeah.
Nice.
Yep. Yeah, actually, we've got it. Michelle Brown, I think, I can't even, I should know her last name, Michelle. She's the subcommittee, the dog park subcommittee, motivated, like, she's into this and she really likes it, so she came to an open space meeting. She's like, "Well, I'll look into that. Well, I'll look into that." And I'm just trying to hold on, because they're motivated and Houston enthusiasm. It's what I like, because they're all trying to get stuff done, and, "Well, why should it take this long?"
Have they finished on, you know, the land that's over near the, oh, should, the hall there that has the pancake breakfast at the end of Hartwell?
Sonic Hall?
No.
The American Legion?
Oh, Hartwell Street, Legion Hall. You know how we did all these A and Rs of that land over behind...
Across the street.
Across the street from there? I mean, if they're not done giving it to DCR, could we carve out a little bit of that to put a dog park on?
It's possible.
I mean, if they're willing to donate it here and there, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it's a possibility.
It wouldn't be a bad place. It's not central, but it's not, you know...
Well, it's closer than further down. Well, it's closer than further down the road at Tibnen Drive, that's true. But, yeah, I mean, that's, that's.
I mean, they were talking about doing other things there.
What was the story about, there was a baseball field, and that was.
Well, they talked about, it's, it's that spot.
Right, well, I'd rather have a baseball field, cause then that frees up a little space over in Goodell Park, cause if you can take one of the baseball fields from Goodell Park, expand and track where it is, we don't have to build the.
How many fields do you need?
We don't have to excavate four million dollars worth of material before we start any work to put the football field in place. We can leave the football field and enlarge it.
How much did it cost to put in their practice field?
I think they got forty-something thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars.
So why isn't it that they could put that in, and it's, it's, people love it and they use it and it's nice for forty thousand dollars, but the next step, ten million, you know, I mean?
That's why the Parks Commission is considering those aspects, there was, there was a master plan and there was some interest, there was some talk that we had five million dollars from the state. So I think the financial burden was not as strong as I think it should have been, and it sounds like what you think, but this Goodell Park master plan is, if we got money dropped on us, what would be the best thing to do? It seems to me, I, again, I.
Waystation, oh, darn.
Well, we already did that, we had a big fight for three million dollars, so we don't wanna do that again for, for this. So it's gotta be something that's palatable by the town and the open.
Straighten it out one forty down by Boston.
But the open space and rec plan is there to guide the direction, not to make a decision that, yes, we're gonna build it the way it shows on the master plan, or no, we're not gonna build it at all, it's.
Right, okay.
Parks Commission is a bunch of.
But they have some guidelines or something.
Right, and they're sensible folks, and I, I encourage people to get involved, and if there's a position.
Get some nonsense on there.
If there's somebody on, interested in doing the parks work and getting involved, then.
Actually, no, who should we get, is that girl, who was the girl that we talked to?
Ivors, yes.
Yeah, Ivors.
Yes, that's, well, she might be good on the planning board, I mean, there's all sorts of, good people can be used anywhere. As long as they don't have an agenda and wanna do what's right for the town, that's really what we're looking for. I know, but you still keep getting elected.
It's your agenda.
Did they?
Alright.
Most of the pictures that they showed of the dog park in Hyannis, was there anything about how much that cost to build that?
I think they said that key, and I don't, the, there's a woman who's on the dog park subcommittee who used to live in Milbury, just moved to town, she's great, and she's got the knowledge of what's gone on, and I think she said it cost eighty thousand dollars, somewhere around there.
The one in Hyannis?
For a dog park, I think that's, I don't know if it's the one in Hyannis, that might have been the one in Milbury.
Oh, was that, was that the ninety percent, was that?
Yeah.
Ninety percent.
Well, it was Milbury Sutton combination, and that was, I, maybe it was a hundred and seventeen, but it may, it was around, let's say around a hundred thousand dollars anyway.
Yeah, but those places, you know, they don't have to level the ground. So here, if you want to level the ground, if you go, if you go, there may be ledges. So if you want to blast the ledges, it's cost more.
Well, couldn't they get DPW to do some of that?
Well, it's always possible within DPW busy doing all sorts of other things, but we don't wanna get them committed. Right now, we're just trying to get the basic idea.
To run the town, right?
Oh, absolutely, I got one more.
Alright.
No, I attended the Holy Cross thing for.
Oh, did you?
Oh, yes.
Yes, I said.
So we went, we went to that, and there was a good session for, uh, what was the first one we went to? Exemptions and.
Zoning exemptions?
Zoning exemptions, she basically said that the uses are exempt and they still need to comply with site plan review and that kind of stuff, so any of the nonprofits in town, if they put a building up, if they have more than fifteen parking spaces, if they trigger site plan review, they still need to come and meet the other site or the other zoning requirements, setbacks, all that stuff.
Like we did with Holy Cross.
Yes, yeah, so everything in town is similar. The second one I went to talked about subdivision securities. So I got a whole bunch, and I didn't bring it with me, but I got a bunch of information where the town can then, if a subdivision hasn't been built or it's not gonna be built, we send a letter to the owner and the owner's security holder and notify them that we may execute the security to get the roadway built. Oftentimes, that encourages the owner to make the building happen, because they can usually build it for less than what they're on the hook for, for the bond or the security, so that was one of the things that came up, and that's something we gotta consider for Century Drive. Um, so that's why I went there, so.
Isn't that sort of done?
No, it's that last strip that has to get worked.
Oh, they raise a bond that we could execute?
Uh, yes, there should, there's some kind of, there is some security. So they either, there's a bond or there is, they can't develop the land until, um, the road is constructed. Well, but that's the way it is, and it's, I'm not sure whether that land, that commitment covenant covers that area down on, um, the Girl Scouts are gonna be, but that's yet to be decided, but that's one of the issues that came up in those court cases and.
Yeah.
Legal mumbo jumbo that has to get jumped through. And then the last one I went to, since I was there the whole day. I, uh.
That's not what I heard.
That's what I mean, that's right.
You were there for one class and then I left.
And I left, right, no, and then the last session was about access and bikes, so it was a lot of the complete streets, the next step in the complete streets program. And there's a program, Access two thousand ten, two thousand twenty, there's a computer program that the folks at CMRPC are using to do the, uh, street, complete streets prioritization. That analyzes the gaps, it looks at where you enter the data, where your residential areas are, your affordable housing, your high density residential, and your uses, like the, the rail trail, the, um, Walmart, the commercial district, and it ties in all the different, uh, streets and shows the, the locations and the traffic patterns and where improvements should be made, so it tries to prioritize the bang for your buck. So that's a program that is in place.
Okay, that's all they do is plug it into that and bang?
Well, it's, like any other computer program, it's garbage in, garbage out, so it takes time to put stuff in and enter the right data. But yes, and it comes out with suggestions that can be justified or verified in the field. It seemed pretty slick, sounded pretty nice.
Yeah, but it's, it's a very small town, you know, you can walk through the town, entire town under.
You can, but it's, some of the stuff that we talked about last night, Mark brought up even the idea of, like, the housing stuff, they're talking about expanding the housing over on Maple Street. Let's assume the folks wanna walk from the housing complex, which is a quarter a mile as a crow flies to Walmart. Trouble is, you can't just fly, you gotta go three quarters of a mile to get down to Walmart, and some people will do that, other people won't do it, but if we could make a, a pathway between the two, because it's a high use area, and if this model kinda pulls that up, then that would be a benefit.
It'll fabricate those sort of ideas or something?
We're to look at the, um.
Resources and.
It looks at the, the hotspots, the, the, there's a phrase for it, but the areas of concern type of thing, and it throws a radius around them of what the regular walking distance for that.
Yeah.
And if the radiuses overlap, but there's no real street, then that's where you see that, okay, there's something, they're close enough, you should be able to get from there to here, and you start looking at it.
Start to know.
It doesn't create the street, but it.
No, it identifies.
Identifies, yeah.
Cut through.
Proximity, it's always a pretty good presentation.
Question or accept the minutes?
Second.
Call in favor?
Upstaying.
So this is minutes for March eighth?
With amendments?
March eighth, did we amend?
Seventeen?
No, we didn't amend it.
I didn't hear any amendments.
I didn't?
I heard a first.
March eighth, twenty seventeen.
Yeah, I can check.
All in favor of accepting the minutes for March eighth?
Aye.
Aye.
Upstaying.
He wasn't here.
We're all in status. Uh, we have no invoices, we do have the Affordable Housing Needs Study, for anybody who wants to take a look, it's.
I'll read it. Oh, I've read that, okay.
I read, I read mine, where the bullets, he did a pretty good job, but there was some issues that I, I gotta talk to him about.
Yes, yeah, you gotta help me.
But it's pretty interesting.
You know who you should talk to, if you'd like to talk to this lady?
What's her name? Paul Stewart.
Not Paul Stewart.
Susan Condon.
Susan Condon.
From MHP.
She's got such insight into a, like, housing production plan, how the, the, she, she understands what's going on in, like, the, the state as far as, you know, people moving in, people moving out, and all that kind of stuff, she's, that sort of insight. But she also has insight into how the, like, if you look at the historical, um, like, the trends in a town or the census, how, how that's actually wrong, because it's influenced by just what's going on in town, like, like our, um, housing stock or something says, you know, there's not much for young families, well, or, or there's not many young families staying in town, but that's because there's no houses for them. You know, and she understands that, and she can sort of doctor that out of statistics that.
Right, that's what we need is, I mean, statistics, you can make anything out of it, but I want someone who knows what they're doing to analyze this.
That's what I mean, she's very, she was very insightful there.
Scanlon's usually a pretty good example.
Okay, when I was talking to her.
Where is she?
She's MHP, she's helping out the, um.
MHP.
Mass Housing Partnership, sort of, sort of similar to THCD.
So how do we get her involved?
Well, she's involved in the affordable housing, but if we wanted to write a housing production plan, I don't know if she would volunteer to do that, cause she really wants to do more, you know, proposals and stuff like that to get affordable housing built, but she'd be excellent writing a housing production plan, and, and we could ask her, but I don't know how much.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we just, I mean, we did one, what, five years ago, so
Great.
Her take on just that might be interesting to then guide whoever's gonna do the update.
Yeah, when we started to talk about update, then I would get her involved.
I thought you were already talking, I thought there was something that was money available for update.
To the housing production plan?
That's where I saw something similar that they were, I thought CMRPC was putting in a bid for update to the housing production.
Yeah, I was confused about that too, it's not the housing production plan, it's.
Oh, okay.
It's hous, uh, it's related to housing, but it's not the housing production plan.
Okay, that's good, nice.
What, Pat keeps talking about it, which, remember which talking, I don't think I can figure it out, but it's not the housing production plan for some reason, I don't know.
Okay, I don't.
What?
Said, why pay money when we have you?
I was gonna bring that up, actually, when Tajra was talking about, how do you get the history all back, and I was like, well, again, that's what Vinnie stays on board. Well, send that, Jim.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we are adjourned.